Mia Hills, my name's Steve Bajinski, I'm this year's president, welcome. John, could you do the invocation for us?
Sure, let's be in a humble spirit of prayer, gracious heavenly father, thank you for letting us get together today via Zoom and to see each other and to laugh. We ask your special blessing on those who work through the court system to protect children. We ask your guidance and your wisdom dear God on our club as we choose the way forward and hope that it is in accordance with your will. We ask these things in your holy name dear God, amen.
Amen, thank you John. Let's see, pledge of allegiance, Debbie could you pull up a flag for us? Everyone join me in the pledge of allegiance please, I pledge of allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Introduction of guests, we have Beth Cardina today here, thanks for joining us Beth, she is our speaker today. She's with Casagoula Summit County, thank you for joining us.
Sure, okay, am I up?
Not yet.
Okay.
Just welcoming you to our meeting, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We also have Jason Chanock here today, thanks for joining us again Jason, Jason's thinking of joining our club, thanks for taking the time to see us today.
Hey Jason.
Hey everyone, thanks for having me.
We also have my lovely daughter Amanda and wife Debbie in the background somewhere, thanks for joining us again, they're my biggest fans. Let's see, who else do we have here that I haven't brought up? Anybody got any guests in there, oh, there's a kitty cat there I see. Your cat's on mute Dave.
Kind of bashful, Dexter, say hi Dexter.
Dexter, welcome Dexter. Okay, this day in history, Casey, do you have something about our history today?
Yeah, so I grabbed three things, so I'll tell you, I'll read it and you can guess what it is, so on this, on this day, so it was a Sunday on February 9th, this is 1964, Ed Sullivan returned from commercial break at 8:12 in the evening to introduce this group of musicians to a restless crowd, anyone know who that was?
Beatles.
The Beatles.
That would have been today, so tonight, you would have been the Beatles, I mean, alright, so February 9th is also today, this is 92. After stunning the world three months earlier with the news that he had HIV and retiring from the Los Angeles Lakers, this basketball great returned to play in the 42nd annual NBA All-Star game, anyone know who that was?
Magic George.
Yeah, and then today's date in 1971, this pitcher is inducted into the baseball Hall of Fame. He was a legendary pitcher known for his fastball, his showmanship and longevity of a playing career, he played for five decades. Joe DiMaggio called him the best and fastest pitcher I've ever faced, anyone know who it was?
Cecil Page.
Cecil Page, yeah, there you go, alright, that's this week in history, actually today in history actually.
Casey, interesting fact. Special birthdays, well we certainly have to bring right up Bill's lovely wife Betty Klingenberg, her birthday is February 9th, which is today, right Bill?
Amen.
Happy birthday to Betty.
Happy birthday.
We also have a birthday coming up, Peggy Spragens, Peggy Spragens' birthday is on February 13th.
Yep.
Peggy.
I'll remind Larry.
Well, I'll try to remind Larry for you. That's all I have on birthdays and spouse birthdays, we have some more coming up next week, but that's what we have this week. Does anybody else have any birthdays they want to bring up that I don't know about? Alright, humor of the day, I don't see Dr. Cockle here today, anybody got any jokes?
I may have, see if I can find him.
While you're looking, I'll throw one out there, this one's for Dave Fike, he probably knows the answer to this one, do you want to hear a construction joke?
Go for it.
Sorry, I'm still working on it.
That's absolutely true, that's not even funny.
Alright, here's another one that kind of made me laugh, why do ducks have feathers? To cover their butt quacks. Alright, that's the only jokes I'm throwing out there, did you find yours so you can cover me up here?
Well, I can't seem to find what I had. Dave muted himself.
Alright, I'll throw one more out there then, I got a hundred of them here that I, that get on reserves, why did the bullet end up losing his job?
He missed.
He got fired.
There you go. That's enough of my jokes, I gotta save them for other weeks. Happy or sad dollars? Anybody got some happy or sad dollars?
Kathy and I have a sad dollar, we each throw in 50 cents, but we found out, Dave, we just found out a couple of days ago that the United Methodist Church is moving our pastor Russ Hamm to another location, so he's been with us over 10 years and most of you know, he's very active, done a lot, but he'd be moving out to Conneah United Methodist Church as of July 1st. But, you know, that's how it works in the United Methodist Church, the bishop decides and, you know, hopefully we'll get somebody better, so, but it's what it is, but we are very sad to lose Russell Lynn, we just have a good relationship, he's done a really good job for our church. Anything else Kat?
No.
Don't quit crying.
An announcement, I don't know if anybody knew Rick Yule, who was the road superintendent at Northfield Center Township. He passed away yesterday at 44, his wife found him in the garage.
Oh my.
Oh my gosh.
Wow, that's sad.
It is, it is.
Sorry to hear that, prayers are with him, him and their family, sorry to hear that Bill. Anybody else? Anybody have a happy dollar that Tom Brady won the Super Bowl?
Yeah, yeah, I'll put it in.
Alright, there you go.
Yeah, kind of lets everyone know it was Tom Brady mostly and maybe not Bill Belichick.
Yeah, maybe. And I'll throw a happy dollar out there for Bill's wife's birthday, happy birthday again.
I will tell her that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, with all that being said, I'd like to introduce our speaker today, we have Beth Cardina. Beth is a graduate of Kent State University with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Child and Family Services. Beth is a licensed social worker with over 30 years experience in the child welfare and juvenile court systems. She currently serves as a program director for the Casagoula Program of Summit County, one of the largest programs in the state of Ohio. She has extensive experience working with foster and adoptive parents in both the public and private sectors. Ms. Cardina is an approved trainer for the Ohio Child Welfare Training Program where she provides pre-service training for prospective foster adoptive parents as well as developing training curriculum for in-service trainings. She is also a former trainer for the Supreme Court of Ohio Judicial College. Ms. Cardina served on the Board of the Akron Area Association of the Education of Young Children, is a current member of the Ohio CASA Board and a graduate of the Child and Family Leadership Exchange. In 2019, she was appointed to serve on the Northeast Ohio Citizen Review Panel. These panels have the unique opportunity to drive child welfare policy in the state and are part of a federal mandate under the Child Abuse Prevention and Treatment Act, please join me in welcoming Beth Cardina.
Thank you, thank you, I think we've covered all the acronyms in the alphabet with that introduction, so thank you. Again, my name's Beth Cardina, I'm the program director for the Casa Guardian at Lightem Program at Summit County Juvenile Court. So we sit at the Summit County Juvenile Court in Akron, Ohio. Again, CASA, it's an acronym for Court Appointed Special Advocates and these are actually community trained volunteers who serve as guardian at lightens for abused and neglected kids. So in the state of Ohio, if a child's been found to be abused or neglected by statute, they have to be appointed a guardian at lightem to represent their best interest in court. The law doesn't say if that needs to be an attorney or a layperson, and so our program actually trains community members to become guardian at lightens for abused and neglected kids. The way that we get the children are through Children's Services, so when Children's Services goes out to do an assessment on a family because of abuse or neglect, if that child's deemed to be abused or neglected, usually a complaint is filed through juvenile court, typically surrounding a removal, so a lot of the kids that we work with are either placed in foster care or with a relative. Complaint hits juvenile court, then the magistrate or the judge will ask for a CASA or an attorney guardian at lightem. And really, the role is to advocate for the child's best interest. We don't advocate for their wishes, although that's important, but we know that children don't always, what they want isn't always what's in their best interest, so they may want, you know, Coca-Cola and Ho-Ho's for breakfast every day, but we know that that's not what's best for them, so that's where we come in. And in order to become a CASA, it's a pretty rigorous process, it is an intense volunteer experience, it's a little bit different than like a big brother or big sister program. Our volunteers are required to go through an interview process, there's a background check through BCI and FBI as well as a child abuse and neglect background check, there's a 30-hour intensive training where we cover everything from child abuse and neglect, substance abuse issues, malhealth issues, domestic violence, the child welfare system, and so it gives everyone sort of an overall picture of the children and the families that we work with. After people go through this training, they're actually sworn in by Judge Tito OCO, so they become an officer of the court. And once they are sworn in, they are assigned a staff person who sort of helps navigate them through the child welfare system and provide support to them. And so the CASA volunteers typically only have one case at a time, but a case is a family, so it could be one child or it could be 11. And we've had families up to 11 children, and again, what they do is they meet with the children once a month. COVID has made that a little bit different, usually the visits are to be in person, but because of COVID, we pulled back on that. A lot of our visits are done either via Zoom, when the weather was a little bit nicer, we did driveway visits or we did porch visits, but we really try to sort of get our eyes on our kiddos at least once a month. But in addition to meeting with the kids, they talk with the parents, they talk with teachers, they talk with therapists, they talk with doctors, and they really just gather all that information, and again, they advocate for what's in the best interest of the child, including custody. So the CASA could recommend to the court that children go back to the birth parents, maybe legal custody to a relative, and they can actually advocate for permanent custody, which means that there would be a court hearing to determine if the birth parents are capable of parenting their child ever. So it's a hearty responsibility, and again, a little bit different than a big brother and big sister in that the role isn't really a mentor, although sometimes our CASAs do serve as mentors for our kids, but we do not allow our volunteers to transport kids or take them bowling or to the movies or anything along those lines, it's really more of an advocacy role. So again, they spend a lot of time with our kids and we've had CASA volunteers who have been with kids for years, 10 years. And it's, you know, in some of these instances, it's the only consistent adult in their life, which is so, so important for the children that we serve, because many times they have adults coming in and out of their lives, so to have that one person of them can really make all the difference in the world. Our program, like in the introduction, is one of the largest in the state, so we serve between 800 and 1100 kids every year, just in Summit County. So it is a lot of kids that unfortunately touch the child welfare system. I did pull up some statistics, actually I got them from Summit County Children's Services, so for the zip code area 44067, right, which includes Nordonia, Sagamore Hills and Macedonia, they actually screened in about 30 cases, so that means through calls of concern regarding child abuse or neglect, 30 of those cases actually were opened up for services. In the surrounding areas, Macedonia, there were 14, and then in Twinsburg, tends to be a little bit higher, which was around 55. But a lot of the cases that we serve are in the 44306 area, which is sort of Arlington area, actually where Children's Services sits, so that's a lot of the population that we serve. We do only serve Summit County, but some of our kids are actually placed in what we call residential treatment centers outside of Summit County, so they could be located in Cuyahoga County, Franklin County, and again, the CASA is responsible for maintaining some sort of contact with their child, either again via Zoom or in person. But once people are assigned a case, they actually have to have six hours of training to be able to continue as a CASA volunteer, so we really build on that kind of foundational training that we have. Our program is unique in that we are what we call a court-based program, so again, we sit at Summit County Juvenile Court, but we also have a nonprofit arm, and that nonprofit arm allows us to apply for grants. So we're able to apply for grants through, for example, the Akron Community Foundation or some other local foundations, and really, those monies go to help support our volunteers, because again, this is a very unique experience. You know, we try to tell people, if you're looking for a volunteer experience where it's tangible, right, like you have a tough humanity, you built this house, or you serve, you know, 30 meals to the homeless population, that's something you can kind of grasp. We don't have that, right, like we are impacting children and you probably won't see the outcome of that tomorrow, or even through the life of the case, but we do know through research that a child who has a CASA volunteer is more likely to experience permanency sooner, so that means either they go home and they stay home, or they're adopted sooner than kids who don't have a CASA volunteer. So not all counties have a CASA program, there's about 50 counties that use the volunteer model. Other counties, they assign attorney guardian at lightens to cases, so attorney guardian at lightens can have more cases than the one case, so sometimes they may not get the intensive services like the kids that we serve. So I'm going to take a breath, I just said a lot, and sort of stop and see if anybody has any questions or if anybody's heard of CASA. They're appointed through the court, so someone can't necessarily ask for one. It doesn't cost the parents anything to have a guardian at lightem or a CASA volunteer, that's different than in domestic relations court, domestic relation courts, there's also guardian at lightens, and typically those are, again, either attorneys or social workers, but the parents have to split the cost when they're talking about those types of guardian at lightens, so what kind of questions, that was a lot.
As you had mentioned, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, so the volunteers, are these mainly people who have like maybe a social work background? Because that's quite a responsibility.
No, they don't have to have any background, actually, you know, the criteria is you need to be 21 years of age, and the way that our judge sort of sees this is, she likes the eyes and the ears of the community in the courtroom. I mean, she will say, I have enough professionals there giving their opinion, I want people who are sort of the boots on the ground in neighborhoods advocating for children in their neighborhoods, so again, does not necessarily need to have any type of a background in order to be a volunteer, so, you know, we have everyone from age 21 and our oldest volunteer is in her 80s, so she's been with the program for a long time. We do get social work students from the University of Akron, law students from the University of Akron Law School, but people come from all different backgrounds, yeah.
You had mentioned that one of your volunteers had been with a child for 10 years. It's kind of tough not to get attached to somebody, you said they're really not allowed to take them places like a big brother or big sister and, you know, do you ever run into situations where they say, you know, I've been with this child, I want to start doing things with them, it's almost like it's my own daughter or something, you run into that?
Yeah, we do, and you know, certainly we want people to become attached, you know, to the kids that we work with, and so in those situations, typically what's happened is parents have lost permanent custody of these kids, and these are kids who are available for adoption, and for whatever reason, they have not been adopted yet, and so we stay on cases until kids become adopted. So in those situations, the CASA, you know, it's really sad, because some of these kids are, again, like in residential treatment centers where the only people who visit them are their CASA and so for their birthday, we actually, and this is something if you guys are ever interested in doing, we create birthday boxes, so, you know, it's a box that will have, you know, decorations, it will have either a birthday present or maybe a gift card to Target, they'll have streamers, and then we have, you know, we give our CASA volunteers a gift card to go to Dairy Queen and pick up a cake, so they create kind of that relationship, and we've actually, you know, CASAs can go with a child if a social worker is with them or a staff person, what we have to be careful about is part of the role of the CASA, even though it's not to advocate for their wishes, they do have to ascertain their wishes, so they have to ask kids where they would like to live, and what we have to be careful about is looking like the CASA is sort of bribing kids or enticing them to give them the answer that they're looking for. So we have to maintain our, you know, being very objective in that role. So yeah, we want them to develop relationships, because like I said, you know, sometimes it's the only consistent adult in their life, and, you know, our kids, I say our kids, it's the kids that we work with, are so used to adults disappointing them, right? I mean, adults tell them all sorts of things, and it doesn't come to fruition. And so some of our kids can't wrap their mind around someone who's a volunteer, like they'll say like, well, how much do you get paid? And they're like, well, we don't get paid anything, well then why are you here? Like, they can't understand that somebody would unconditionally want to spend with them and talk to them about their interests or, you know, what they want to be when they grow up, and those are the things that are really important and can really, you know, I know it sounds cheesy, but really can set a child on a different path by having that type of relationship. So even though it's not tangible, it is a very powerful outcome sometimes, you know, and we can't, you know, once a case closed, we can't tell the kids that you've called your CASA anymore, so we do have some CASA kids reaching out to their CASA volunteers once a case is closed, just to touch base or, you know, they can have some advice from them, because especially, you know, the group of kids who are emancipating out of foster care, so again, these are kids who don't have a permanent family, they haven't been adopted, they turn 18, and I don't know, for those of you who have adult children, I mean, we have two, 29 and 30, I can tell you, they were not ready at 18, they're still not ready to be on their own, I keep coming back, and that's fine, and we're here for them, but to have kids, you know, that turn 18 and out of the child welfare system, where do they go? What do they do? Who do they call when they have a flat tire? Who do they go, you know, to for Thanksgiving dinner? You know, all of those, that social capital that I think sometimes we take for granted, they don't have. So our CASAs can help connect them to some of the adult services if they're in need, yeah. It's unique, we're part of a national program, people aren't aware of that, there's almost, you know, there's over 900 CASA programs throughout the country. Most people aren't familiar with us, it's not really anybody's fault, right, unless you're involved with child welfare or you know someone who does this, it's not necessarily like it's on people's radar, but our program has been in existence since 1981. But again, a lot of people are not familiar, just because we're not, you know, out there in most cases, which is probably good, right, that just is saying that people haven't been involved with child welfare, it's a big system.
Do you need to live in the same county that the child is in? And also, how often in a month period of time do you make contact with the child?
So that's a good question, so we, if you live in a county, for example, I'll say Medina County, Medina County does not have a CASA program. So if somebody from Medina County wanted to be a CASA for Summit County, they could, and we serve the kids through Summit County. Cuyahoga County was the last metro area to have a CASA program, they've been in existence about three years. So if somebody would come from, you know, Cuyahoga County, we would say contact Cuyahoga County, we don't necessarily want to take people from another county if they could use them in their home county, but yeah, and so in terms of seeing kids, it's usually once a month, but you're, you know, what we do is we draw a circle and put that child's name in it, and sort of anybody who touches the life of the child, you're in contact with, including the birth parents, and, you know, that's when we have people are like, ooh, what do you mean? Like, I have to talk to birth parents who have caused harm to kids and that's why they're here, and yes, you do, you have to keep in mind that the kids that we serve are part of their birth parents, and if, you know, we can't have conversations with them, it sends a clear message to some, to our kids sometimes that, you know, we're not comfortable with their birth parents or we're afraid of them, and, you know, we want kids to see that everybody is on the same page and working what's best for kids. And to be honest, we've, you know, knock on wood, we've never had a situation where a birth parent has threatened a CASA or has followed them. If they're upset, they're upset with Children's Services, right, Children's Services are the people who took their kids away, but sometimes birth parents don't understand what you're doing, you know, people just have a hard time understanding that people are doing this just out of the kindness of their heart, so it's some education on all parties.
Another question, if you don't mind, so, and only because my family had been involved with foster care in the past, but I also know that when you said that you don't have to have any kind of special license or something to do this, because I have had in a reverse situation where a child manipulated the situation and someone who was a very good outstanding person got in trouble, but it was, you know, and in that situation, do you have someone who does intervene, you know, since they're not professionals that are volunteering?
Right, and that's a good question, so again, we assign a staff person who's sort of been trained in different areas, and it's not like the CASA can come into a courtroom, because that's part of your role is going into a courtroom and making recommendations. They just don't do that on their own, so there's a conversation that they have with a worker from our program to kind of go through the whole case and make sure that their recommendations are in line with what our role is. And so we have staff people who do that, we also have two staff attorneys that are also available for the CASA volunteers, and again, to kind of help process, you know, well, you can't ask for that, that's not legal, you can't, you can't do that. So we definitely have the support there to sort of, you know, kind of put people in their right lane. And don't forget, mom and dads, you know, have an attorney too, they have a defense attorney and Children's Services has a prosecutor. So another difficult part about this is you could be working on a case for 18 months or two years, and at the end of a case, make a recommendation, and the court doesn't have to agree with that, right? Like, they could go in a total different direction, and so sometimes what happens is the CASA is very disappointed, you know, like they're like, I just spent 18 months, two years on this case and the outcome isn't what I expected. And there's no guarantee, but again, you can't doubt the impact that you've had on this kiddo for the last 18 months or two years, but the court is looking at different factors than we're presenting sometimes, so that can change the outcome on cases. What other questions?
No more questions out?
If you're interested, let me know, we have a website, www.casagal.org. We are under the umbrella of National CASA again, so there's certain standards that we meet in order to maintain that accreditation. But we definitely love the opportunity to come and speak to different groups, or if you're interested about becoming a CASA or more information, please don't hesitate to reach out to us.
Oh, we certainly will, and if our group wanted to participate in any of the birthday boxes or anything, we would contact you and try to set something up. Is there any way, I mean, I'm really surprised, I mean, from what I'm adding up here, there's like almost 100 cases just in our area between Macedonia Twinsburg and Sagamore Hills and that, it just, it just amazes me. Is there any way that we could say, yeah, we're going to put this together, we want it to go to our Nordonia area?
Oh yeah, no, no, yeah, because we, you know, when we're putting out this information to computer, we do do it by zip code, so we can pull that information on where the kids are, and to be honest, Steve, I can tell you, a group that sort of needs a lot of support are the relatives that are taking these kids in. You know, grandma who, you know, thought she was in one phase of her life and all of a sudden here come her four grandkids and she's like, you know, yes, I'll take them, but may not have the support like a foster family would through the agency. So we did do some adoptive family situations over the holidays, focusing specifically on those situations where relatives focusing specifically on those situations where a relative has brought in typically multiple kids to try to care for. Now, there's not a lot of money attached. It's like, here are these kids. Yeah, good luck with that. There's some, but not nearly, you know, it's not going to cover the needs of of kids. They eat a lot.
Right. Do you ever work directly with the school systems?
Oh, yeah.
Casey probably knows that already.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we can actually, you know, have request an IEP, you know, an educational evaluation. The teachers are, wow, they have so much information. And teachers sometimes are like, I'm just waiting for somebody to ask me. So we go to different meetings, you know, touch base with teachers on a regular basis. I will tell you too, you know, the majority of the kids that we typically work with is because of neglect. But throughout the pandemic, what we have noticed with some of the referrals coming through our department is an increase in abuse cases, physical abuse cases. And, you know, we're kind of attributing that to some of our families are in a pressure cooker, right? I mean, they're just, and then something happens and people just lose it. So unfortunately, we have seen a little bit of an uptick in the physical abuse cases during this time. You know, we can't wait for the pandemic to be over for lots of reasons. But particularly for the kids that we work with, being in a classroom is really important because teachers are mandated reporters and Children's Services does receive a lot of referrals from educators.
Question, so like what percent staffed are you with the volunteers? Like, are you in great need of volunteers?
Yeah, we are always in great need. So we have close to two hundred CASA volunteers. But so we only like to assign one case at a time. But so if a case can last eighteen months or two years, that can prevent some of our volunteers from taking cases at the front end. So, you know, if that makes sense. So we do have some situations where more seasoned volunteers may take more than one case. But they just, they just keep coming in. There's never a time where we're not in need of a CASA volunteer. And people can kind of choose what they're interested in. Some people don't want to work with teenagers, that's fine. You know, or some people really like working with teenagers. So we try to be mindful on the assignment on what people are comfortable with too.
I think Peggy's trying to ask something.
No, I wanted to tell the group, I used to be on the CASA board before Judge Udocio was there. Judge Robinson was there and it's a tough job and you have a tough job. And it's a very few pleasure because it's kids, it's emotion, it's tough. And it's, it's a really tough job. So I thank you for doing that.
Oh, well, thank you for being on the board. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, Peggy, because that's exactly what I was thinking throughout this whole presentation, that, boy, that's gotta be tough. I mean, anytime you're working with kids and you know they're not being treated properly and you just want things to go their way. It's, we're really lucky to have people out there like you in your group to do this for us. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys for what you do for the community too as well. So, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes. What is the percentage of boys to girls in clients?
It's a good question. It's, it's almost equal, actually, a little bit more males than females, but not that much. It might be like fifty-seven, you know, fifty-three, does that equal a hundred? So it's, it's pretty close. And in terms of age, you know, we do see newborn babies, right? Newborn babies that may have tested positive for drugs and Children's Services are involved. So we know that that's a very vulnerable group, like that birth to five. And then we see school age kids, probably the next, and then adolescents coming to the attention of Children's Services. Older kids tends to be a smaller amount. But again, there could be a child who's ten, but now they're fifteen. So, you know, they became evolved younger, but now they're, they're a little bit older. But it's pretty much equal in terms of males and females. And just as an FYI too, with juvenile court, people might not be aware of this, but there's a couple specialized court dockets that we have. One is a human trafficking court docket. We know that the youth that we serve are very vulnerable to be trafficked. And so we do assessments on youth that are coming through to see if either they are being trafficked or at a high risk. And they're sort of put on a different track. That's a little bit more intensive services. We actually have a staff person who's trained to work specifically with those kids. So, yeah, we want to be, try to preventative or try to get them, you know, out of that, that situation.
Excellent. Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for what you do. Thank you for the opportunity.
And I'm sure we'll ask you in again, because what you do and what you've talked about is just so interesting and needed. Thanks again.
Thank you, thank you.
We're going to be going over some club announcements. You're more than welcome to hang around if you want, but if you wanted to leave, we understand. So thanks again. All right, everybody. Just a few announcements here. We're waiting for the weather break and then we'll get cracking back at Safety Town. I think all the storefronts are pretty much made up, but we're not going to go out there in fifteen degree weather and put them up unless Dave makes us. So we'll keep you posted.
Sunday, it's going to be negative three, let's go.
Well, we figure the colder it is, the faster that you'll work. So you can get done. So, but we'll keep you posted on that. Next week's February sixteenth, I will be checking out the polar vortex up in the U.P. of Michigan. So I won't be here, but Latif has graciously volunteered to run the meeting next week. So Latif and Debbie will be doing the meeting next week in my absence. If for some reason I am in the wifi, I might just join you on my cell phone. But we'll see if, if there's wifi where I'm at in the middle of the woods. But next week's speaker is Samantha Lozenheiser. She's with the Cleveland Clinic and she'll be discussing the implementation program for the COVID-nineteen vaccination. So our speaker next week is going to be very interesting also. We have a board meeting February twenty-sixth, so that'll be the Friday after I get back. March sixth is our reverse raffle that's coming up soon. We need to know who's got tickets left over by next week. Just so any unsold tickets, we can start pushing them right away. We don't want to, at the last minute, find out we got thirty or forty tickets that we need to move. Dave, you have anything else on that?
If you can turn any stubs and checks in that you have, it's important that we get both of them turned in at the same time. This way we aren't running down the pieces. And this way we can start putting them into the system and getting all the email addresses listed out and organized. I got a, I didn't get it out last week, but I'm going to get an email out to generate the folks for the virtual evening. And I really want to do some brainstorming with these folks on the nuts and bolts on how this is going to work.
Did you want to have like a quick meeting maybe at SLC, Dave, or do a virtual meeting? Or how'd you want to do that?
Either or, virtual is fine. I think it is important that we brainstorm and try to work out any of the details that might come up during the actual and avoid that embarrassed moment.
Okay, well, why don't you talk to your wife, since she's going to be on the board? And whoever else we chose and we'll, the week that I get back, let's try and set something up. That'll give us like two weeks before the actual drawing.
Perfect.
Okay. We also need some gift cards, everybody. As you know, throughout the, the raffle, every ten numbers pulled, we'd like to give something away and it's usually a gift card. So if we could start.
Have four gift cards in and a lot of commitments, but until I have them in my hand, I don't have them.
So the good thing to do is when you're turning your tickets, turn in some gift cards. So if we could get an update on that next week and start doing some counts, that'd be great. So that's what we got going out of the reverse. The good news is it seems like the tickets are really going well. And I think we are almost sold out. As Dave mentioned earlier in the meeting, he has two winners still in his, in possession. And I have two that I, and we're kind of challenging each other. I think my two are the winners. So we definitely have four winning tickets that we have here. So let's try and sell them. But if you have any left over, let's get those sold. Let's see. Oh, yes, March thirtieth. That meeting, we're going to have a four-way test to see who's going to go to the four-way test meetings. Josh Hayes needs three judges. It's a fun thing to do during the meeting to, you'll get a regular little printout with the judging rules. And so if you want to volunteer to be a judge during the four-way test during that meeting, please let myself, Debbie or Josh Hayes know as soon as possible so we can sign you up and get you all prepared for that. But that'll be March, our March thirtieth meeting. We'll have some of the Nordonia students coming up and doing a presentation to try and win the four-way test speech contests. Tomorrow is the first grant seminar for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two season. Latif, Jacob and Debbie are both are all going to attend along with John Bosco. But John Bosco is actually on the, the grants committee. Did you have anything to say about that, John?
Steve, it's tonight, not tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is tonight. That's right.
And if anybody else wants to sign up, just go to the District six, six, three, zero website. Very easy to sign up and it's virtual, only lasts a couple hours tonight. And it's very, it's well worth it. So if you want to learn more about grants and what Rotary does with the money that goes to the foundation, this is a great time to do it. Thank you.
The deadline, the deadline was yesterday to sign up, but there is another seminar coming up. I can't remember the exact date, just a few days later. It's in the email that I sent.
Yeah, so if you go on, and I mean, they might even still be opened up. They say there's, but you never. Yeah, you never know. But if, but like Debbie said, there are two of them. So if you want to do the one on the twentieth, sign up for that one too, if you can't get into the one tonight. But it is very, very informative and you really learn a lot about the, not just local grants, but international grants and how they're done. So anyone that wants to learn more about that, please sign up. I think that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything to add? Okay, with that being said, if everyone could join me in the four-way test, Debbie, if you could pull that up. Everyone, please join me in the four-way test.
Of the things we think, say or do. First, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third, will it be?
Goodwill and better friendships.
Fourth, will it be beneficial to all concerned?
Thank you, everybody. Meeting is adjourned. Everybody try and stay warm and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Enjoy your vacation.
Thanks.